All good?
All good.
All right. I'm calling this meeting to order. Attendance enroll call please.
Supervisor Holfried.
Here.
Councilmember Arda Sana.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Courtney.
Here.
Councilmember Dicinger.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Is there any public comment today?
I have none.
None for the audience?
No.
Moving on then. The Sugarloaf Chamber of Commerce Spring Festival road closure and usage request for the Performing Arts Center. So this is something that's done every year by the county, but since we own the road now, we need to be the ones to to
Approved to closure?
Get the road closure approved, yes. And the 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 usage request for the front lawn of the slack. So we had a meeting with Walt this morning, who said he's been in contact with the insurance carrier. They said that it's fine as long as the the bouncy houses have been the main issue here. It's fine as long as the insurance is provided. So we talked about it and we can do a resolution approving their request pending the procurement of the insurance. So with that being said, let me just read this off real quick. We would just need a certificate listing town Chester. Yep, as an additional insured. So that's been sent to the chamber. And yeah, and somebody from the chambers here today, yes. Would you like to speak on any of this?
Sure.
Do you want to come up for some?
I'm the secretary for the chamber.
Yep.
I could actually just put a policy this morning. So we do have the policy in place with the town Chester as making sure.
Okay.
In the amounts that were requested there.
Perfect.
I'm going to get with the owner of the bounce house company because I believe he needs to also provide insurance as well. And I have those available to email over at any point, so when I leave here, I'll send it off.
Okay, good.
To Brandon and anyone else.
I'm just, yeah, me and the
Linda.
Linda. Yeah, if you send it to me, I can send it to her. You don't, but her her email should be on the website as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So send those over as soon as possible, but we will still do, we'll still do the pending resolution because we don't have it from the bouncy castle people yet. Bouncy house people yet. But as long as, I I believe that they they usually do this, so it shouldn't be too hard to get it from them. Once we have those, then you're good enough to have it on the lawn. Just like
I think he actually maybe did send it already.
Okay, great.
We just were waiting for the clearance and all of that, but I don't think it's going to take very long to get it from him.
Very good. All right, so do I hear a resolution to approve the road closure? What what are the parameters here may forth and fit from the hours of what?
It runs from 10 to 5.
So nine to six?
Nine to six.
Eight, I believe. The vendors like to get in there and start setting up early.
Okay, all right. And then to six is enough for a breakdown?
Sorry, I need to interrupt. The email that I'm sending out to the vendors, just so you know, the vendor setup does start at 7:00 a.m.
Okay.
And that's for the ones with the trailers. So we're asking them to come first, obviously, to get the big trailers set up and then out of the way. And then starting at 7:30 is the rest of the vendors are welcome to come and set up. And then that gets them, you know, a couple hours to get their tables and everything set up. I don't know if the road closure needs to reflect that.
Yeah, so seven.
I think it should because they usually set up right on the right on the pipeline, so it would be easier.
And when do you think that it should end?
Six, I think, is a good, they're usually broken down a little bit before that, but
Okay, so do I hear a resolution to close the roads from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Kings Highway for the Spring Festival?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And do I hear a motion to approve the front lawn usage of the Chamber of Commerce for the Spring Festival pending the acquisition of the insurance certificates?
And that's waiving the fees?
Yes, sorry, yes, and also waiving the rental fees.
And that's the same thing we do for the the movie foundation?
Yes, yeah. And this is done every year for the for the chamber as well.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. All good? Jen?
Yes.
Or is it, it's Jessica?
No, it's Jen.
No, it's Jen, yeah, okay, good. Just want to make sure. All right, moving on. The procurement policy. So this is to get in line with the New York State procurement policy. Neil and Liz worked very hard on it in the last couple of days. And this is obviously in response to what we need to do over at the for some water improvements. So you could just go over it.
Sure. So under New York State, there's a default state law, General Municipal Law 103. It is anything over 20,000 for purchase contracts, anything over 35,000 for labor contracts requires a competitive sealed bid, unless there's some exemption that applies. Your procurement policy on one hand is more stringent than state law and provides for $25,000 as the threshold for competitive bidding for both labor and goods, thank you. And so what it means is you're impermissively
More strict.
Below on the on the one side, or excuse me, over. And then, so you're just inconsistent, let's let's put it that way. So what we've tried to do is put together a procurement policy of which effectively requires department heads and liaisons to coordinate with, at least make a good faith effort to attempt three bids when we're below that 20,000, $35,000 threshold to obtain three bids. If they can't obtain three bids, explain why they can't obtain three bids. So that we have an orderly procurement policy that's consistent with the New York State law. So if anybody has questions?
Is there any questions or debate points on this?
And I just want to say, we're in the process of changing from a voucher system to a requisition system. When we're closer to that process, the procurement policy will be updated again to reflect that process. So right now, we're only changing the procurement policy as to values that require bidding. And it more clearly sets forth who can do what at what levels.
Just one question, the highway department, were there any adjustments made there?
I I sent it to him, I did not receive a comment back from Mr. Riley.
There's already rather large, isn't it? Didn't we increase that last year or something?
Right, but this doesn't
So we can go back in and
This was a sample that I used from a different municipality. I can certainly, if there was an existing highway, just give me one second.
Yes.
This was a sample that I used from a different municipality. I can certainly, if there was an existing highway, just give me one second.
Yes.
Hi, Neil Meyer, the Town Comptroller. I spoke to John about it yesterday. Basically, since we're going to be updating it anyway in a few months regarding the requisition system, we figured we would work with what we have, and then if it needed to be updated, we can update it at that point in time for the amounts. So that's the way.
Thank you.
That was settled. So that was his feedback.
So just so, just so I'm clear, we're leaving the numbers in the draft resolution, the draft policy that I circulated yesterday?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, see, did anybody see anything wrong with those?
Nope.
No.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions or debate points on this?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
All right, all right, great. So do I hear a motion to
I'll make a motion to adjust our procurement policy.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, passes unanimously. Resolution authorizing Tom Becker to sign for the county coordination system forms. Tom, do you want to explain what that is?
It's just application that goes into the Orange County Health Department. That allows us to put a chlorine system back into Sugarloaf Performing Arts Center that's not there now. They have to approve that system to go to be put in place.
All right.
And we did, what it basically did was bring us up to the new standards. So the original concern I had at the last meeting was the fact that we didn't have the contact time necessary. So in order to meet that contact time, we have to raise the chlorine level to meet that. So we'll we'll run a higher chlorine level there we would normally run in the normal system. That'll put us in compliance.
Gotcha.
And this is just for the application, no expenditure?
Yes, no expenditure.
Does anybody have any questions or debate points, Tom?
Nope. I'm good with it.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize Tom Becker to sign?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Just some new business. I know it wasn't on the agenda, but it just came in kind of quickly. First, I was asked to officiate a marriage. I need to be, I need to be designated as something?
Well, is this a one-time thing for you?
As of right now, yes.
Okay, so you have two options. You can, you can purchase a one-day officiant, provided the couple have already received their marriage license.
Okay.
Or you can be designated a marriage officiant by the town board.
I feel like the second option is, does it cost
It's really on your tenure, I think it won't be the only request.
Okay. Yeah, so
Yeah, I was thinking about getting married, I would love to
I'll do that.
I agree. Now it's on tape, so now you have it.
There you go. All right, do I hear a motion to, what is it? What's the language here? Designate me official
As a marriage officer for the town of Chester.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. All right, great. Thank you all.
Linda, do you have the information on the Sugarloaf well with you?
I do not, but I do have it at my desk.
Could you get that so we can approve that today also?
Are you talking about this that you just handed me?
No, that's just one part of it. The other part was the three, the three bids I got on having the new pump installed in the well at Sugarloaf. Thank you.
Linda, are you recording right now this?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm going to have Neil talk about something. Neil, do you want to step up for the energy rates?
Thank you, gentlemen. So I've been on the direction of the town supervisor. I've been looking into the town's energy rates. The town entered into a one-year contract previously that expired in November, where it was paying energy rates of 12.365 cents per kilowatt hour. So in working with a couple of different providers, we've been able to get two essentially bids as to the direction to take. And I'm just looking for the board to give some direction as to which way you guys want me to go. So it's not necessarily a vote, but just sort of a consensus as to which direction. The first one is we have a market rate where we can go month-to-month on a market rate of around seven and a half cents per kilowatt hour until maybe sometime over the summer and work more towards a long-term energy rate over the summer when rates are traditionally at a lower rate. Or we can enter into, we were given two different rates. One for 12.1 cents per kilowatt hour, oh no, sorry, 10.1 kilowatt cents per kilowatt hour for 18 months, or 10.6 cents per kilowatt hour for 24 months. So those are the two that you guys can choose from, or the three that you can choose from. Just kind of want some direction as to which path you guys want me to take moving forward. I can probably have a contract written up for next week's meeting, depending on which path you guys want to take.
On the first one, that, how volatile has that rate been?
So the rates are coming down. I mean, traditionally, they go up in the wintertime and they go down in the summertime. So, you know, we're essentially moving in towards the summer. In the winter, they were as high as 16 cents per kilowatt hour. And then in now, this past month, we paid about nine and a half cents. So you can
The numbers are probably kind of like an average in between.
So it's about an average. So I did about an average. Some of our accounts were not on that, on that long-term rate. I did about an average. It averaged out to about 11 cents. So you paid a little bit more than you probably would have paid had you stuck with some market rates over the past year. But at the end of the day, these are pretty good rates. The 10-point, just so you guys are aware, the seven and a half cents, okay, is a mix of of about 50% clean energy and 50% what they call brown energy. The two rates that I solicited for the long-term rates, the 12, the 18-month and the 24-month, so the 10.6 and the 10.1, that is 100% green energy as well. So you're getting a great rate, 100% green energy. If you wanted that to be a mix of 50% brown, 50% green, that rate would come down to about 9.6. So the savings isn't significant.
So it's a good chance that the electric that we're going to get at that rate may be generated right here in Chester by the solar farms that are here now, possibly.
Possibly. I mean, it comes, it goes into ONR's, you know, grid and then, right. It's just a matter of the, how you're fixing the rate and and how they're essentially pricing out long-term rates.
If you were, you know, professional opinion, personal opinion, we go with the with the the one that uses 100% green?
You know, you guys put me on the, I was put on the direction of doing 100% green. You know, if that's the direction you want to go into, I think that would be obviously, you know, it's a great rate. I mean, 10.1 cents per, you know.
And that's stable throughout the year?
So that'll be a fixed rate for 18 months. And then at the end of 18 months, we'd have to negotiate another rate. The end of 18 months puts us more towards August or September timeframe, which when rates are traditionally lower. So it'll be our next time when we would have to enter into a new long-term rate, the rates will be hopefully at a lower rate by that point in time. If you did the 10.6 over 24 months, that's obviously going to put you into more of a winter timeframe when you're renegotiating. So rates, long-term rates will be at a higher, higher at that point in time. And then obviously, you have volatility within the the energy market. So that could always change everything altogether.
So the mixed, mixed rate is, you said, 9.6?
About nine, you can get a mixed rate now. The the same guys who quoted me, the 10.1 and the 10.6, said it would likely be around 9.6. They didn't really price it out for us because we didn't ask them to. But they said the the state minimum is 50% green then. And and so usually you get a mix of 50% green and 50% brown.
I like to see a quote on the mix, just so we know what it is.
It's about 9.6 cents per
If we don't, the reason why he's bringing this to us is because we, it's it's going, the deal is going to go away.
Yeah, we have to, we have to make decision pretty quick to to lock in these rates. Otherwise, they're going to change.
So when's the cutoff date?
They didn't give me a cutoff date. They're pretty quick, though. The change, rates change pretty much every day. So the idea being that they gave me these quotes on Friday. You know, by the time we enter into some type of agreement next week, they could change by, you know, point one or point two. They can, they can move around a little bit. But as I said, rates are coming down. If you wanted to do, if you wanted to see what a mix of brown and green we can. As I said, the 7.6 market rate is also a mix of brown.
Right.
That's the 50% too. And you can go that and do a market rate for a few months while we negotiate longer-term rates with that same company. But then we're locked into that company to do long-term rates.
Neil, Neil, I have a question. You said that, you know, the rates are higher in the winter than than they go down in the
Traditionally.
Traditionally. Because, you know, I'm I'm using my house and I'm using, you know, prior life I was in. You know, usually it's a trade-off. Usually it stays about the same because now you're going to use more air conditioning and you're going to use less gas for heat if you, if you're using gas for heat. So I don't understand how you save if you run an air conditioner all summer as opposed to the heat in the winter. The reason for that is during the winter, you don't get a lot of electricity out of solar. That's why. That's why.
You don't get electricity out of solar. Those are the cloud coverage.
Okay. You know, the angle of the sun and and snow and this and that, you wind up getting Efficiency's not there. You're not, you're not getting the production out of the solar.
I've traditionally found that usually energy markets are controlled a lot by your speculators in the market.
Yeah, I mean, we used to buy, we used to buy futures back, and that's, I guess, kind of what we're doing.
And that's exactly what we're doing. You know, not to get too technical, but that's exactly what we're doing. We're buying a future contract to accept delivery on certain periods of time. But that's all behind the scenes and that's what they do.
Are there other contractors besides the two that you have?
I mean, there are others out there we could, we can
I mean, I know, I know this is time sensitive, but I would hate to get into something if we go to somebody and they can give us a three or five year and and give us a good rate.
We've been looking, so we've been looking at what the web, but ONR has like, you know, their preferred providers and all that kind of stuff. So that was just sent to me this morning. The 10.1 and 10.6 that were being thrown at us, I mean, those are really good rates. Those are pretty comparable, what we're going to find out there. Actually, for 100% green energy, that was probably the best you're going to find at this point in time. I don't usually tell people to go into three, four. I mean, usually what you're going to get is 18, 24. Those are usually about the the timeframes that you're going to find long-term contracts. Anything more than
I would like to see if we can, I know ONR suggesting it, but there's got to be, there's got to be providers out there that ONR does not suggest. So what would those
Well, that's, that's the one that's actually quoting us, isn't, they're not Yeah, they're they're outside. And they're actually an energy broker is what we're dealing with. So they're going out to different energy companies and they're actually looking at it. Yeah, they're doing the research for us.
I would say 18-month is probably a way to go, I would think.
You said what?
I would say 18-month term would probably be the way to go.
Yeah. I think so too, personally. Does, did somebody?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay. I just want to make sure we're getting the best rate.
100% green energy one.
I I trust in Neil's ability and
All right, so what I'll do is I'll go back to them and I'll say, all right, put this contract together. We'll get Liz to review the contract and then hopefully have this ready, but to go by next Wednesday's meeting. That's okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Did you put together analysis, you know, showing what the actual dollar amount is based on that rate?
I put together analysis of what we've done over the past year at that rate. And you could basically take the energy usage that we've done over the last year and you can kind of project out what that's going to cost us. And based on that, the 10, the 10.1 cents would save the town over what we paid last year, about $20,000, just under $20,000.
And if we want the mix at 9.6, how much would that save?
It would only be a few thousand more. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that significant.
Okay.
$20,000 about saved with 100% green energy?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Could you send me that?
I'll send you the analysis.
With that
I'll send you, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Neil.
All right, thank you, guys.
Is there any other new business at this time?
I just have the information. You want to do the electrical part of the well at Sugarloaf first?
Yeah, please, please explain it out. Or you need this?
No, it's just, yeah, I can read off the cost. So in order to hook up the new pump at the Sugarloaf well that we took out of service and want to put back into service, we got a a quote from Cody Electric, who does mostly electric work for the water department. And the quote was $2,552.56. So I'd like to get a resolution to expend that money to get that work done along with the, I'll read off the quotes I got for installing the pump and the work that needs to be done there for Sugarloaf.
Okay.
So I'll make the resolution to expend the money for Cody Electric.
Is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A second part of this is I got three price quotes to have the well pump installed and a pitless adapter on that well so we get that well back in service at Sugarloaf. The high bidder was Turnbull Well Drilling at a price of $28,000. The second low, lowest was Quack and Bush Water Systems at $27,450. And the low bidder on this was Rourke Well Drilling Incorporated at $27,163.14. They all bid on basically the same item. It was a draft put together by our engineer with all the same appliances and pumps. So everybody bid on the same thing.
This is to do what again with the well?
This is to get the well back in service. This is to, this is to install the pitless adapter needed for hooking everything up and to install the pump.
This is the, this is the second backup well, the new backup well?
This is the old well that we're putting back in service.
Yes, sorry, okay.
When we drilled deeper. Yep, so this is to get that well back in service. And from here, we've already proved the cost of the Part V testing, which Chris has to bottles and everything for. So as soon as we get this in place, he'll get the, you know, the testing done. So then from there, we can get approval from the health department to go back into service.
Do you like the company that gave the lowest bid?
Yeah, like I said, they all build on the exact same thing.
Yep.
So it's just a matter of this is, you know, the three prices. We do a lot of work with Daryl, but we've also done work with Rourke. It's good to, you know, work with other well drillers, not just one, so.
What's the difference between Rourke and Quack and Bush?
Uh, approximately. Only about $300. It's not a big difference, but that is the low bidder, so I don't see why we shouldn't go with the low bidder.
I agree.
I'd like to I'd like to make the motion to, uh, hire Rourke Well Drilling to, uh, do the work to get that well back on.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, the price quote was $27,163.14. And that's the low bidder. The high bidder was 28,000 even.
Got it.
And that does conform to your newly adopted procurement policy?
Yes. Exactly. All right, is there any other new business at this time?
Uh, that's it, thank you.
Nope.
No.
Kristen, what, weren't you here for a reason? What insurance?
Um, for parks and recs.
Yes.
The difference.
Yes, please, step up, thank you.
Pass that down to Linda, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Crystal Palmer, account clerk for SL Pack and Parks and Rec. So the current, um, permit we have for anyone who's interested in renting out the town parks, the pavilions, states in a section that all, all applications require certificate of liability insurance, naming the Town of Chester at 1786 King's Highway as additionally insured. The insurance must carry an aggregate amount of a million dollars. When I, um, sent the insurance to our town clerk and to our town insurance company, they came back to us and said, "We recommend the wording in the description box be updated to read. Town of Chester is included in additional insured on a primary non, non-contributory basis with a wa, waiver of subrogation." We would also ask that if they have an umbrella policy, and if so, have it listed on the certificate. When I, when someone came back to me, when I added that to the, to the language, the person, uh, came back to me and said this would cost them. So what happens is when somebody rents and they get this additional insurance, it doesn't cost them anything if they own a home in Chester. Their insurance company gives them a certificate and they're able to rent the space. When I put this out to somebody who wanted to rent the space, they were told that it would cost them additional money, and then that would end up costing them more than it costs to rent the space. So they would prefer not to do that. When I went back to the insurance company and said that, uh, Taniqua, our representative, said, "I discussed this with Owen and we recommend the waiver be added. If they don't wish to add it, then it's a business decision for the town board." So I guess it goes back to you guys to decide whether we need this or whether we suggest that we have this. I will state that I have never had an issue, knock on wood, having said that, I don't want to create an issue, but, um, most people rent the space for two, two to four hours, they're in and out. I've never had an issue with anybody, you know, with cleanliness or anything like that. The, the permit's pretty clear that, that, you know, it should be left as it is, and, um, people are using it for birthday parties, for, um, sports, for things like that.
So that would affect renters or people outside the community then?
It, well, usually it's within the community that rents the space.
Okay.
So that would be our Little League, that would be our town soccer, it would be the school, it would be anybody who, resident who rents the space and any non-resident who rents the space.
I, you know, I would think that, I can certainly understand not changing it for residents of the town. But outside of the town, I could see the change.
Okay.
Is that something that we can do? We can apply it to only people outside the town?
I don't know the answer to that question.
That's a legal question.
If I can, I'd like to, to look at that a little bit, a little bit further. I think you maintain your current policy as, as status quo.
Current policy without?
Without the waiver, yeah.
Umbrella, okay.
Um, but I can tell you that this is happening throughout, the insurance market is getting tighter and tighter and tighter, and it is, um, becoming aggressively harder and more expensive to obtain coverage for all sorts of municipal events, other things like that. So I just want to look at it a little bit more, so if you could email me?
Absolutely.
That stuff, that would be great.
Absolutely, I think it would also apply to anybody renting the space at the Sugarloaf Performing Arts Center or any kind of town property. So just to be aware of that.
But sometimes these, you know, these certificates can cost several hundred dollars.
Right.
Or for folks, if they, you know.
Or even a small thing.
It's becoming more and more of an issue.
Okay.
So currently, I can continue as I am and, and you'll look into it further and discuss?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, Chris. Kristen, is this a good place, time to talk about the, uh, the permit denial, you think?
Uh, that's up to you.
Can you explain the, very briefly, the situation?
So, um, we, we have a pretty strict policy that most towns have as far as the fields are for use by permit only. That covers us with insurance, then you know who's there and any kind of damage or anything like that. Recently, at Carpenter Park, we had a group that, it's a travel group, that I was called several times to ask to leave because they did not have a permit, they're very aware of the permit, they've used it in the past. So we had the police come twice and ask them to leave. At the third time, I believe they had an altercation with someone else, words were exchanged, um, it got a little bit heated. So now they're asking to have a permit for a week-long camp at one of our parks, and my question is, do I, you know, it kind of goes against the rules that they've been there and they've known they've been there without, I had a very long discussion with the person, and they were there without the permit, and then they showed up again after that discussion. So do we start denying permits based on the fact that you're, you know, blatantly ignoring the rules because we kind of need to keep control of that so that anybody isn't just going on our fields? Every town has that, that I've spoken to, as far as their field use, you don't, you can't just use it.
Why would you want someone like that renting the field if they don't follow the rules?
That's my concern.
If I can, I'll, I'll get with Kristen, um, offline and, and talk to her about the specifics of this, this one.
You don't think we should make a decision at this time?
Well, I think the, you have the general consensus, um, what Councilman Dyson, you're just, just iterated that.
Is that something that the rest of the board agrees with at this point? Yeah?
Yeah. But, oh, let me look into the specifics of this group and I'll touch base with her.
Absolutely.
I, I just, I, you know, if somebody wants to rent a field, I don't know if we can do a refusal.
Well, we can, that is within our right.
Okay.
It's just, it's just a matter of do we want to enforce?
So they, they, they currently don't have any applications open with me, they're asking for one in the summer, and I just wanted direction on how to proceed with that.
I, I just don't want to be exclusive.
Right, but in this.
But again, if it's a problem, and it's been a reoccurring problem, we have to, we have to take that into consideration.
I agree with Larry, because you know what, if they knew already and then they just didn't want to follow the rules, if it was, somebody was the first time and it's a one-off.
That's different.
And I would absolutely not bring it, you know, to anybody's attention, I would have a discussion personally.
This has happened three times with this person.
Correct.
Okay.
I will talk.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're going to, just, we're not going to give them a permit at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
And Liz will be following up with you on future situations like this.
Absolutely.
To figure out how to do it better. All right, is there any other new business at this time? Yes?
I have a comment online, if you're ready.
All right, is there any other new business at this time?
No, no.
No, all right, public comments, please.
Lydia Quigros, is the water coordination system for the SL Pack to be used with their existing well or is it for the potential hookup to the Sugarloaf Hills water district?
It's going to be for the existing well to bring that, bring that system into compliance with the Orange County Health Department.
All right, is there another comment? Okay, all right, that being said, uh, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, we're adjourned, thank you.